Hello, everybody. Welcome to our newest study stream. And on today's study stream, we have a very special guest. We have the man, the myth, the legend. Ka. Ka, introduce yourself real quick.
Uh, I don't know. What do I say? Um, well, hi, I'm Ka. I'm a first year medical student. Um. At Notre Dame. What else do I say? I don't know.
You're supposed to say everything except exposing your alma mater because you didn't want to get docs, but it's all good. So good.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're just gonna. We will be doing cystic fibrosis, cell biology and genetics, as the title says, as the title says. And we're gonna start by doing some Anki. Ka and me are gonna be doing Anki. Jure is gonna be watching osmosis. And then we'll be shifting over to do some practice problems that we will be streaming for you guys to follow along with us. If you're watching the video, of course. She have zero viewers right now, but. Sir, let me just lower the lighting here. Oh, no, making it too bright. Yeah, I need to lower it.
Maybe next time we'll announce before going live. Something like that.
Yeah, something like that, something like that, for sure. Done. Okay, shall we get started?
Yes, I'm gonna mute myself.
Mute myself. Wait, should I share my screen so people can at least see? What's going on?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Might as well share something.
Okay, done. Okay, I'm done, basically. I just needed to get down to seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm ready when you are.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Ka, you said you got the practice problems for cystic fibrosis?
Yep, um, I'll share my screen, maybe. How do I do that? Does it click present or?
Yeah, yeah, so I'll start presenting and then you can present.
Okay. Um. What the hell?
Ka has some technical difficulties. Man, I should stop sharing. And then you should just hit present and go to share screen.
Can you see that?
At the stage. Yep.
Alright.
Is this my bootcamp?
Yeah, 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 it is.
Uh, bro, Bed Boot Camp, if you ever watched this video, you should give us a affiliate link.
That's got.
Sponsorship.
Right, shall we start?
Yeah, let's start, let's begin. So cystic fibrosis is most associated with a deletion mutation in which gene?
CFTR. CFTR.
Yeah, that's pretty easy one.
Ninety-eight percent?
Yeah, ninety-eight percent of people got that right.
Alright.
Master, yeah, let's go through the description.
Oh, you wanna go for this?
Yeah, yeah, might as well, because we might be missing information that might be here.
Yeah, okay. Cystic fibrosis, okay. So you have, we have chronic. Rhinosin- how do you say that?
Rhinosin.
Chronic rhinos, yeah, you got it. I think that's just chronic inflammation of the nose and the sinuses, right?
Yeah, so rhino means nose. And then itis is your inflammation.
Done.
Salty sweat and electrolyte wasting. Chronic obstructive lung disease. Mucus plugging. Recurrent respiratory tract infection. Uh, fertility complications in female. You have reduced fertility, so thicker cervical mucus. And in male, you have congenital bilateral absence of vas deferens. So this is actually not even there.
Oh, yeah, didn't even realize that. So you don't even have the vas deferens.
Yeah. So the, this, yeah, that would be like. Whereas in the, the female, I guess you would still have possibility of, um. Fertility, whereas in the male, it's like, not really.
Yeah, I, I think somebody in my PBL said it reduces to about thirty to fifty percent.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Work for males?
For females, for males, there's no fertility whatsoever.
Yeah. Thirty to fifty? Should we fact check that?
Yeah, fact check it. CFTR is on chromosome seven, okay. Yo, where were you getting the background noise from?
Is it me? Wait, oh, this mute and.
Might be my computer, actually. It's kinda making a loud noise.
Alright, if I mute, tell me if it disappears.
No, I, it's Ka, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's my computer for sure. It's like making this loud noise.
Oh, good.
So phenylelin, right? P H E.
Yeah, it's like. F five oh eight.
Yeah, I think F, F O P H E is the same thing, so.
I think P H G becomes F when you shorten it down, because I think amino acids, they have like three, and they have like a one.
Yeah. So causes misfolding and improper trafficking of the chloride channel.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll go next one then. Are we happy with this?
Yeah.
Okay. What type of channel does the CFTR gene code for?
C.
It's got C.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds pretty good. So it does call for the ATP gated chloride channel.
Yeah.
And the role of CFTR channel. Uh, functional cystic fibrosis. Okay, so it's like comparing normal and not normal.
Yeah.
Can you guys see that?
Yeah, yeah, sir, we can see that.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's enough water to allow the cilia to beat, to move the mucus.
Yeah, there's like. More, because I think it's because the chloride and sodium, they're like stuck in the cell here. So chloride can't get out, right? Here. So then sodium will also stay inside the cell because of the, because chloride attracts sodium because of the charges. Because chloride has, is negative and sodium is positive. And then water, and that creates a higher osmo pressure, um, osmo. Um, rarity inside the cell, so then water also stays in the cell.
Yeah, so the cell is like hyperosmotic compared to what's outside, I, I think it's called.
Yep.
Or hypertonic. So then it requires, it has a higher solute concentration, so it needs to have water, so it's pulling the water in.
Yeah, that sounds right.
More difficult to beat.
Um. And then the mucus becomes thicker. What's actually, why does it look so much bigger than the functional lungs? Shouldn't it be like? Like, I get it, it'll be like sticky and stuff, but why does it look so big? Because there's like less water, right?
Uh, I think it's because the mucus is thicker due to the fact that it has less water in it. As the water's moving into the cell. It starts to accumulate on the top because it can't move out of the lungs.
Ah, that makes sense, actually. Yeah, that actually, yeah.
By the way, on the fertility, according to Davidson's, it's sixty to eighty percent, uh, still fertile. And twenty to forty are have, like, experience delayed conception.
Okay, so just a little off from the thirty to fifty percent I gave.
That's all good.
Sure. And then you, you mentioned that the cilia needs water to, to work properly as well?
Yeah, so, uh, somebody in my PBL said it was like a mucus escalator.
Mucus escalator. Okay.
So think, think of the mucus going down an escalator.
Hmm.
Okay.
Where it's the cilia that's moving it, and it requires water to move the mucus out of the cell. Or, I know, out of the cell, out of the lungs.
Yeah, yeah, so it moves it up the lungs. Uh. I think it's just the thickness. Obviously, like, water would probably help, but thickness is something genetic, so. Damn, should have studied this stuff before doing this.
Ah, you're right.
Yeah, it's good, it's gonna make the Anki review easier.
Hmm.
So the CFTR encodes an ATP, yep. ATP gated chloride channel, which must be properly embedded into the cell membrane to function properly. Mutation of this gene can impair chloride transport in or out of the cell, which is the basis of cystic fibrosis.
Yep, okay, cool.
Alright, we'll go next one. In the absence of functioning chloride channels in the cell membrane, what findings would you expect to see in the lungs and GI tract?
Hmm.
A.
Yeah, gotta go with A.
Looks so good. We'll double check the other ones to see if it makes any sense.
So it wouldn't be in the lumen, the chloride?
It'd be in the cell.
Yeah, because it's not leaving the cell, right?
Yeah. Uh, unless it's on the skin, right? So, because on the skin, um, chloride channel pumps chloride. Into the cell, does that make sense?
That makes sense, because then the sweat is like salty. Uh, we should double check that, actually.
No, no, it, it, yeah, a hundred percent it is. But yeah. But it's not even, yeah, lumen is like. Yeah, that's not even, yeah, it's a different thing. So thin watery mucus diarrhea.
That doesn't make any sense, because there's no malabsorption. So, because usually you get diarrhea when there's a lot of water in the.
Hmm.
That's not being absorbed, right?
Ah.
Reabsorbed, and then.
Being reabsorbed.
Yep.
Pretty sure, yeah. We'll check the answer. Nice.
Bro, everybody's getting it right, though.
Yo, these questions are too easy.
Really hard.
I barely know what cystic fibrosis is, and I'm getting these right. Come on, man.
Yeah, what is this?
In addition to, oh, this one's harder, I think.
Okay. It got real.
Ha, 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 ha.
Yeah. It's most likely to affect the patient.
I'm gonna go with C, just because. The lungs.
Yeah, I'm thinking C as well, because it's pneumonia, lungs. The other I know is pseudomonas originosi and staph aureus.
C. I, I'm. I'm not gonna lie, I'm, I'm guessing it's, I'm guessing this one.
Do it then.
But what's the reason for your guess?
I'm not gonna lie.
Reason, so it just has to be, like, you have to know it.
Uh, yeah, I, I think it's just, I heard of this before.
Okay.
The dog.
Because, I would assume it's not E. coli, because E. coli has to do with the abdomen. Because it causes a lot of the GI diseases. Club, club celia, I've, club ciella, I've never heard of. Burkholderia capacia, I've never heard of. And logically deducing streptococcus pneumonia makes sense, because your. Mucus is not moving out of the lungs, and the mucus is a barrier that's using innate immunity to protect against infection. But yeah, ju, you go ahead, go, no, 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 go with B, go with B. I, I might be wrong.
Okay, let's check.
Nice.
How did you get that, bro? Holy shit!
Nah, but I, I seen it before, I seen it before. I was studying fibrosis, and, so this one, staph aureus, I think, is in kids. Whereas the pseudomonas. Uh, how do you, where you say that? In the, in the Burk- capacia. Dude, I, I was also watching the movie, and I think I saw the mention.
Oh, Five Feet Apart?
Yeah. Think so.
Should have watched the movie.
Nice.
This is a bullshit, brother!
Let's see what it says, let's see what it says. Okay, so this, the age down here, so from. So pseudomonas, yeah, pseud- pseudomonas aureo. How do you say that? Giu?
Originoso.
Yeah, that's like more in adults.
So is the teenagers, they had staph aureus?
Teenager, yeah. Staph aureus.
So you picked this red one, right?
Yep.
Damn, that's a rare one, alright.
This is not even in my Anki cards.
Yeah, this one's a. But yeah, I haven't heard of the blue one, though. Hemophyllos influenza, never heard of that.
I've heard of it mainly because they talked about it in my PBL group a bit.
Okay. So patients with cystic fibrosis are at an increased risk of respiratory infections due to thick mucus that is difficult to clear. In childhood, the most common causative agent is staph aureus. In adulthood, it's pseudomonas or, orogenosa, infection becomes more common. Although staph aureus infection remains a concern. Yeah, I guess so, because it's still there, right? Like, it's in forty percent of patients. And it goes down a little bit.
Sounds good.
In addition to the P. originosi and staph aureus. B. capacia is another causative agent that is increasingly tested on strep one exams. Sweet, okay, I guess this one, we, we just have to kinda like memorize the, the names of the bacteria.
Hmm.
Bro, I got this on a screenshot, this is some bullshit.
That's good, it's good. So what, uh, muscarinic, cholinergic agonist must be given to induce sweating for chloride sweaters?
Yo, we should know this.
Ah, hell.
I was going with pilocarpin just because it's a rectal pili muscle. I might be wrong.
Uh. I have no idea. I'm gonna say atropine.
Atropine? I feel like it might be atropine, I'm not too sure as, as well, actually.
Uh, put atropine down, put atropine, that, that makes sense, put atropine. I've never, it, it could be, yeah, democracy rules.
Alright, we'll go with democracy from now on.
Alright, let's check. Oh, no, no way! Oh, it's a dictatorship, I'm telling you!
Yeah.
Oh, shit, you got it right. Okay, pilot. No, I, I added pilocarpin, because it's easier to remember, but. Pilosapias.
Electropile. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I told, about reasoning was too elite, guys, I'm telling you!
Dude, and you never, oh dude, that's actually insane.
Never in doubt, never in doubt.
Well, I swear, like, we just have to go by the names.
Yeah.
Except for that other bacteria one, that's the only exception.
Ah, true. Yeah.
So chloride sweat test measures chloride in the sweat, is used to diagnose cystic fibrosis. Pilocarpin is a muscarinic.
Muscarinic, yeah.
Uh, which must be given to induce sweating in patient undergoing a chloride sweat test. The sweat test is positive when there is a greater concentration of chloride in the sweat than normal. Which suggests a defect in the ATP gated chloride channel in the skin. Uh, these drugs are C, A, C and D. Okay, oh, these drugs are all muscarinic antagonists, which is.
Okay.
Don't know, not quite sure what that means, but.
Yo, you remember that quote by that Indian guy that goes? Democracy is the rule of the people. But the people are retarded.
That's facts.
So key take on. A positive chloride sweat test suggests the diagnosis of cystic fibrosis. And pilocarpin is a muscarinic, cholinergic agonist which must, which can be given to induce sweating. Okay. Alright, sweet. I think that's all for the questions. Maybe the, there might be more questions elsewhere.
Oh, try going through Bed Boot Camp and find some other questions, like maybe diabetes, I don't know. Or try, we can try to find some Blue Link questions we can do.
Blue, yeah, Blue Link would be good. I'll have a look. I'll, I'll, I'll try to look for some now, surely. Hmm, what the hell, okay.
I found some, but it's. Not necessarily. We can run through these, I went to the Blue Link practice, I'll, I'll just send you the link, Ka, and then share them.
Okay, sure, let's do it.
These are just pure anatomy questions. I, I send them to it in our private chat.
Yeah.
Then I'll, I'll try to find some other ones that are. Okay, I also found this one as well. So one I sent was like practice problems that don't have images, and this one has the images, secondly. We can do both, we can start with the non-images and the images one. I mean, I can share this one if you guys want.
Yeah, obviously.
Share the screen, yeah.
Okay, which one do you guys want to start with? Upper limb, lower limb?
Let's start upper.
Oh, man, I feel like I'm gonna fail this. Alright, let's go.
It's alright, man.
Give us the bones, man. Scapula, please. Clavicle. I actually studied for those, no?
Okay, let's go. Upper limb. Forearm, wrist and hand.
Uh.
Left, two shoulder. Yeah, I don't think we need that. We'll start with shoulder brachial plexus and arm.
Yeah. Is this gonna be including, uh, veins and arteries?
Yeah, it should.
Alright.
What do you think this is?
Ooh, I can't see.
You're not sharing.
Oh, man, stop sharing. It's because it moved on to a different.
Oh, like a new tap, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll share the windows, it doesn't happen again.
Holy.
Uh, okay, so this is.
A ligament?
Alright, looks like they've cut the. Clavicle, right?
Yeah, it torsioned.
Okay.
Clavicles.
So this has to be clavicular. Ligament.
Is it like a conoid? No, um.
So this is the, this right here is the acromion, this is the coracoid. Right here. So then this should be the coracoclavicular ligament.
Alright, I don't know if I've even done the ligaments, but that sounds pretty good.
Coracoid.
Oh, nice.
Ooh.
I'm a G, man, I'm a G.
Alright, okay, okay, so the bottom, which key point to the, um. The chromium again?
A chromium is right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the clavicle, so this is the coracoid process, this is the coracoid process, sorry.
Ah, that's a good way to to remember the ligaments, okay. Coraco, cuz it's like between the coracoid and the clavicle, coracol. Okay.
And I think this is Terry's minor and infraspinatus, but I might be wrong, I might be switched. Yeah, that's the other side. Sorry? Isn't that, um, posterior? Yeah, so this is Terry's minor, this is infraspinatus, I think that's the case. Alright, okay. So what is this?
So like glenohumeral ligament?
Glenohumeral capsule, I think it is, what do you guys think? Um, would you call this the capsule or would you just call this the head? I just call it the capsule, cuz it's a ligament. Shoulder joint or glenohumeral joint capsule, same thing. Well, are these all ligaments?
Nah, this one.
This one's a muscle now.
Yeah. Um.
Alright, we're still anterior. Subscapularis? Yeah. Let's go with subscapularis.
He studied for this, bro, what's going on?
Man, for real, for real, just educated guess.
Yeah, that's good guess, man.
No, I know, this one is.
Is this pectoralis or is it like a Terry's muscle?
This is the deltoid, Terry's major, Terry's minor.
Terry's minor.
This was Terry's minor. Yeah, so are we subscapularis again? I think there's infraspinatus. Infr- yeah, yeah, that's the one, infraspinatus.
Are you flying through this, actually doing so then?
Guess, guestimates, guestimates.
Innovates it.
Axillary nerve. Axillary shoulder, yeah, axillary.
Axillary, yeah. deltoid muscle is tagged, okay.
What the fuck are we looking at, bro?
Break your plexus, it's the break your.
Just say break your plexus, you'll get up a mark.
No, 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 wait, wait, wait.
I actually knows this. Allner nerve. That's crazy.
I fucking got it, I fucking got it, no way, no way, no way. I actually got it. How did you get it?
God, God transplanted it into my mind.
Bro, that's insane. I have no idea how you got that, though.
What are you talking about, bro? This is my guy, I'm a G, I'm a G.
That's a good freaking yes.
Bro, why is the first time I've ever looked at this too? No, I'm trying to figure out how you would, why you would even say that, man. Cuz I know the ulnar nerve, ulnar nerve is on this side, so it's going this way, right? And I'm like, you know, looks too thick to be anything else.
Thick?
Yeah, like, the this nerve seems to be, it's thicker than the two nerves below it. So I'm thinking it should be either be ulna or radial, that was like my logic. This is very stupid logic.
Well, I I I was thinking between five different nerves, cuz I know there's five. Your plexus, so there's it, there's a, well, I won't go into it, but.
No, go into it.
Okay.
You don't know.
So there's five branches of the brachial plexus, so it could have been either one of these five, the, um, axillary. The musculo cutaneous nerve, the, uh.
Ulnar radial median?
Yeah, yeah, those are the other three, so it was one of those, I knew it wasn't the median nerve. But I know which one's the medium, it's like the one that makes the M shape, if you look there. Uh, yeah, that's the one, yeah, yeah, that would be the median nerve. I'm pretty sure. And then axillary goes under the armpit, so it would be that the one above it, that kind of looks like it's going underneath, I think that would be the axillary. Or, yeah, I think so. But yeah, nah, that was a good guess, though, holy shit.
Top G, top G, what can you do?
Ooh, it's an artery, okay.
Deep artery of the arm.
Deep artery of the arm?
No idea.
Is, what, what, wait, what muscle is, what muscle is innovating, is that the deltoid?
Delta, it's, no, I think it's the axillary, I'm just gonna say deep artery of the arm, yeah, here you go. Posterior circumflex.
Humor artery, so that's a, that's part of the, um, axillary artery, right?
That is some bullshit, posterior circumflex humoral.
That's, that one's tough to get.
Ah, bullshit. Uh, I think this one is. Radio. Medium.
Wait, let me see, this is. Wait a minute, what the fudge?
I think median.
Median nerve?
Okay. The, i- is this the median right here?
Yeah, that's the median, so.
Well, it's the same one.
Oh, no, it's a chord, identify the chord of the brachial plexus, so this is, um, it's not, it's not, it's none of the five. So the, let me think, this, um.
One of the three, there's three, right?
Three chords.
How many chords are there?
What are the chords name again? I think there's lateral, no. Um. Maybe it's lateral medial. Wait, no, lateral middle median?
Posterior. If if there's lateral, then there should be medial.
How many chords are there again? Wait, can you give me a hint, bro, how many chords are there?
Bro, you you drew it for me one time, there were three. The posterior medial and lateral.
Okay, this is this free, okay, okay, so that would be the, let me see, lateral, right?
Yeah.
That's lateral chord. Uh, but I kind of had a hint, though, okay, I was leaning towards.
But, yo, can you explain where the medial and the posterior are, so I'm assuming this is lateral, that's posterior, this is medial? Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, wait, no, there's no posterior chord, is there? I I think it's, what's it, what's it, mid- middle chord, was it?
It's posterior medial lateral.
Shit, okay.
So lateral and medial would be in front.
Yeah.
Goes to the back, or goes behind.
Oh, it's coming together now, okay, that makes sense.
Klavian.
Subclavian vein?
Yeah. I don't know. One sec, I just wanna go through this Blue Link they gave us, bro, okay, brachial plexus is right, damn, bro. Probably go to these Alki parts and break your plexus. Beyond freeze, like, uh.
This is subclavian vein.
I think it's subclavian, axillary vein, okay. That makes sense. Cuz I I think this is subclavian.
Or is that? Clavian branches into axillary and and another vein.
Axillary vein drains into the subclavian.
And then what's that one below the subclavian?
Uh, bro, I have no clue.
Let me see. Yeah, I don't know. Does it, I can't find it, um.
What do you think of this one? Yeah, I think it's Terry's major.
Okay, let's go with Terry's major, oh. Let's go, bro. So where would Terry's minor be?
Above it. Uh, Terry's minor is right here, Terry's major.
Is that like equal, is that the, um, is there supposed to be something on above it? Another muscle?
Infraspinatus. Yeah.
Infraspinatus, okay.
Bro, I literally did this.
Oh, is this the, oh shit, okay. Foraco acromio. Trunk, is that it?
Sounds good.
Wait, wait, hold on. Is it asking us for one of the four, you know how it's got four different branches? I I.
I don't know if it's pointing at a branch, cuz it looks like it's pointing right here. Yeah.
Do you guys wanna try and name the four, the four different branches as well? Cuz I know there's a monomic for it, it's like cadavers are dead people, so this deltoid. Deltoid? Um. Peck, is it pectoral?
I know it's upper scapular, thoraco-chromial, lateral thoracic, I think. Let's just check what this is, absolutely, yeah, this is axillary artery, makes sense.
Wait, what, it's not pointing, oh, is it pointing to the?
Yeah, it's pointing right here, that's what I'm saying, it's actually.
Okay, it's not even, okay, okay, I thought it was pointing to the branches, okay, that's alright. Ooh, is this?
I think that's the brachialis.
Brachialis?
Coracol brachialis, most likely.
Coracol brachialis.
This is the brachialis right here.
Cut the, they cut the long head and stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
As you can see, they cut the the two muscles there. Above it.
Sorry?
Like slightly above the arrow, they cut the the two muscles there, uh.
Yeah, they they cut the two tendons of the bicep brachii, so it's showing the brachialis and the coracol brachialis.
Hmm. Yeah, so coracol brachialis muscle, alright. Um. Are we still in upper limb?
Yeah, radial notch? Hmm. Is that a notch? I think that's radial notch, because I think this is the ulna, right?
Radial notch.
Okay, yeah, yeah, radial, yeah.
Let's go. Bro, how did you study for these, I need to know, man, how'd you study for?
Bro, Blue, the Blue Link Archidex, bro, I'm telling you, coming in clutch. Yes, sir.
Alright, that's the radial notch, so. Oh, let's go.
Radial nerve?
And which is this just then?
No, this was the posterior cord, wasn't it? It identified this nerve. Okay. Oh. Damn, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it looks like the.
Yet again, yet again, radial nerve, big sense. Because it looks like it's going to the other side from what we're looking at, right? Yeah, behind.
So which one's the posterior cord, then?
The thick one.
Huh.
It, we're doing nerves and cords, which are two different things. Hmm.
Okay. So I guess the post, oh yeah, that makes sense.
Alright. Tricep. Tricep, what do you guys think it is? Yeah.
Yeah. Tricep's long head, or just tricep breaker, okay.
Sure.
Oh, that's the way, Terry's minor?
Yeah.
Is it Terry's minor?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, let's go, I literally learned it just now, alright.
What the fuck is this, bro?
Wait, no, no, bro, 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 this is the.
Thoraco acrom, thoraco dorsal.
Um. Oh, dude, I just learned this yesterday as well, what, I remember it, um. Now it's got this weird name, bro, I think it's something else. Oh, wait, maybe I'm thinking of some, uh, I don't know, actually, it's, yeah, actually, um.
Dorsal scapular, bro, what the fuck is the dorsal scapular artery, bro? That's some bullshit.
Is that part of the axillary artery, the branch of the axillary artery?
I I think so, I think it's a branch from the upper scapular, I don't know. But it's committed to memory, dorsal scapular artery, right there.
Dorsal scapular artery, and it's got, it looks like a, okay. And what is innovating, bro, what is that muscle right there?
I I think this is the Terry's major.
That's a Terry's.
That's Terry's major, it's a infraspinatus.
Infraspinatus, okay, is it a supraspinatus as well?
That's right here. Yeah, the one that's cut up, but.
Ah, I see.
So dorsal scapular innovate, oh, sorry, um. Terry's minor. What was that?
Is that the clavicle between the infra and supra?
No, that's the spine of the scapula, I think.
Ah, I see.
Yeah, he's right.
Also, we're looking at the posterior view, then?
Hmm, yep.
Okay, and that's the dorsal scapula, okay, alright, no, that makes sense, bro, okay. Some reason I was looking at anterior view.
That's nice. That one was the last one, you guys wanna do a different one?
Yeah, that was fun, bro, let's do more.
Dude, that was difficult, man. Let's do, okay, give me a number, one, two, three. Uh, give me a number between one to twenty. Okay, let's randomly spin the wheel here.
Alright, let's do it. Oh, man, I'm gonna get so.
Oh, what is this for? This is to figure out which one we're gonna do. Okay.
Twenty, come on. Twenty, oh, eleven, what is it?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Can you zoom in? Zoom in?
Okay, yo, is that the? Ampila vada.
Yeah. Major duodeno papula.
Is that the same as, oh, no, 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 actually, yeah, you're right, you're right, sorry. I I I was saying of the structure before, ampila vada, so it's ampila vada, then it's the major duodeno papillae, right?
I don't know that. Wait, what's the other name for the ampila vada?
It's like hepato pancreatic, some shit, let me see.
I think it's a hepato pancreatic ampulla.
Something, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Ampelovada of the name. Oh, wait, also known, oh, wait, hepatopancreatic ampulus, yeah.
Yeah, cool.
Oh, that's the.
Descending part of the duodenum.
Wait, is it the duod? Oh, wait, what?
Oh, boom, descending part of the duodenum.
Oh, what? How'd you get that, bro?
I'm cracked, bro. What can I do? Those blue like archie cards are coming to clutch right now, boss.
No way. You got that. That's crazy. All right, all right. No, that's good. Okay, second. Okay, that's the descending part and it looks like they cut away the stomach.
Yeah.
Or is that the?
The stomach is right here.
Oh, what's that part that's cut away then?
I think that's the beginning part. Like this is the pylorus, pyloric sphincter right here. So then they cut off a bit of the duodenum.
On the first.
Yeah, what's what's the small?
Don't jump in, so it's. Is it?
Duodenum, duodenum, ilium. Yeah, yeah. So it's the first part of the duodenum that they've cut off.
What's the name of it? Is it just descending as well? Or was it transversus and shit? So this descending transverse, okay, never mind.
Connection?
Yeah.
Pancreatic duct.
Other ducts that thick, like that big?
Yeah, it is. It is.
Oh, man.
I'm telling you. My guy.
You're good. You're locked in, bro.
I've been locked in, bro. This is the day I've been born. I've been locked in. But we saw us two viewers on YouTube. I can't believe this.
Two?
Yeah, we had two on. We had three in total. Bro, your jury, we gotta find out who this other guy on your Discord is, bro. I started Discord on your Twitch, yeah.
Okay, let's.
Be specific regarding.
So gold bladder and just under it has to be.
I can tell you what it is.
Dude, don't tell us. Don't tell us. Is it like, is it a, is it a, is it an omentum?
No.
It's not shit, okay.
What's on top of the kidney?
Gold bladder?
No.
No? Oh, um, is it like the the hat thing?
The hat, the Jewish hat, I mean, don't cancel, please.
Let me see, let me see.
It's the right supra rino gland.
Supra rino gland.
Yeah.
Supra rino.
It's the adrenal gland, which is on top of the kidneys.
Oh, okay, okay.
So is there another name for it? Supra rino gland?
Yeah, adrenal, adrenal gland. It's where you produce adrenaline or adrenaline, yeah.
So it's the same thing, right? Supra rino adrenal gland, okay. The hat of the. You're gonna give me a mark, bro, if I say the hat.
Maybe if you put J hat, like a J in front of the hat, and they might give you a full mark.
Oh, shit, all right.
In fact, I think they'll give you a hundred percent.
The J hat.
The hell is this, bro?
It looks like they. Oh. Is that like a pericardium or some shit? Fibrous layer? No.
Wait, where is this located? This? Are we below the liver? Oh, wait, that's the gold bladder. Um, that's been.
Mesentery?
Mesenteric, oh.
I mean, I don't know how superficial this is, but it looks like fascia.
Yeah, it does. The abdominal fascia. Do we check? Reno fascia.
How'd you get that?
That's all you.
I'll take it.
Yes, sir.
Wait, so it goes, how, what's like the order? So it's like the the super, uh, the ones at the top is. What's above it? Above the?
I think it's literally just skin.
In renal fascia and then that's and then organ, is that it?
Pretty much.
Okay, nah.
Maybe some muscle.
I memorized this thing. All right, that's the renal fascia. All right. All right, it's in here now. Next minute.
Okay, which?
Hmm, what do? No.
Reno papula. I think that's sort of this. I might be wrong. I'd be fumbling the bag really hard right now.
I'm I'm going with that.
You gotta do my exams for me then.
I got you. I got you. You just gotta say, you just gotta go to the washroom and say Netanyahu three times.
What are you doing, bro?
Okay, I I need to shut up. I need to shut up, man. Bro, I'm gonna get us canceled.
Three videos in.
Artery.
All right, we got a pancreas.
It's next to the pancreas, yeah, above it. Oh, it it's running along the pancreas. So that's the. Um, does it start with S?
I think it's the common hepatic artery. I might be wrong, though. Shall we check? Bro, give me that magic already. Pro, I'm cracked. What can I tell you, bro?
You're actually, you're, yeah, you're destroying these, bro. So what's the one I'm thinking of, bro? You know how there's like one that's like running along the top of the?
Splenic?
Is that the splenic? Is that, is it in the photo here? Is it close?
I I think this is the splenic, I think.
Ah, and then it, oh, and then it joins up with the superior mesenteric to form the. No, actually, no, I'm thinking of something else. The portal.
I think celiac trunk common hepatic artery. That's the splenic vein, because remember we were talking about earlier where you have splenic vein, inferior mesenteric? And then superior mesenteric joins up with the splenic vein to become the portal vein?
Yep. Ah, so that's a vein. I I got them mixed up. Okay, this is splenic artery, the one on the right here.
Yeah, I think so.
Splenic artery, and then that's the common hepatic artery. All right.
Yep.
Uh, superior branch of anterior branch of the superior pancreatico duodenal artery. Anterior su- I got it, though. I got it. You can't even cap. I got it. Oh, darling, you have cracks, bro.
Louis still got like eight weeks to the exam. Why are you ready now?
Bro, I'm not ready now. I I barely know the physiology portion.
Bro, that's crazy. Is that easier name than this, bro? Anterior superior pancreatic duodeno. Dude, that's such a mouthful.
You just gotta remember the mouthful, bro. I just go out of pancreatico duodeno, which made sense because pancreas and duodenum here. Then superior, it comes from the top. I I think it comes. Sorry?
And comes over the front, like the anterior, so.
Yeah.
Fair enough, fair enough.
So that's the anterior superior pancreatic duodeno artery, okay.
Yep.
Would this be the uh, in in pan- anterior inferior pancreatic duodeno artery? Okay.
I think it's the greater pancreatic artery.
I think it's inferior. I think cause good.
Pancreatic artery.
Inferior pancreatic artery.
Well, I had inferior in there, bro. Come on, let's go. Yeah, that's what half a mark. Let's go. I'll take it.
Man, I got cooked on this one. Oh, bad, what the?
Superior. I'm guessing superior pancreato. That's my guess.
Greater, greater, superior, greater pancreato.
Greater superior pancreatic duct, I mean, uh, artery.
I'm gonna say it's. Is there a posterior or is it called something else?
There is posterior.
Maybe that's posterior, bro, because it's behind the duck, the um.
So.
Yo, that means the same thing. I'm taking it.
I saw dorsal dorsal, uh, posterior aren't the same thing because dorsal is this side.
No, dorsal is like, like if you have your palm, this is the dorsal side of your hand, like the back. It it just means top, like a shark's dorsal fin. Like, you know, sharks have the dorsal fin that sticks out of the water. It's on.
Oh, true.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So then this would be ventral.
Yeah.
Okay. And what's it called on the feet? If it's on the hand, it's dorsal. What's the feet called?
Uh, their dorsal, but it, yeah, it's palmar and plantar. So plantar is the bottom of the foot. Those palmar is this eventual part of the hand. Back of the foot is, uh. So the bottom, the sole of the foot is plantar.
Hmm, yeah.
Not sure what the top is.
There was a name for it, but I forgot. Nah, it should be right.
I think it's still.
Still dorsal.
Dorsal because, yeah, because they call it dorsal pedis artery.
Oh, so it's dorsal, okay. Only the only the bottom side is different. Plantar and palm, okay.
All right, so what are we looking at here? We've got the. This is something big.
Anterior branch of the inferior pancreatico duodenal artery.
All right. I'll take it, yeah.
Inferior pancreatic duodeno artery. What? It's inferior. Oh, yeah, it is inferior to the pancreas. Okay. And it's next to the duodeno. Ah, okay, so there's like a, there's like a logic to the madness, I guess.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Well, there should be logic in in medicine, apparently.
Like these naming, bro. Okay.
Okay.
What is it? What is?
Middle supra rino artery, I have to get it.
Is that the kidneys?
It's going to the adrenal gland again, right?
So. Supra renal then, right?
Yeah.
Supra, okay. And there's a middle. So then there's a, there's a. Um, is there a superior and inferior then?
Inferior, superior, middle, I think.
Okay, which one's inferior?
This one right here.
Uh, okay.
And which one's the superior?
This right here.
Okay.
What's the one next to?
Which one?
Oh, that's it. Okay, okay, dude, branches. No, no, a little bit. I won't be able.
I don't know what this is.
Middle supra rino artery. I don't remember this vein, um.
Left gonadovain.
I have no idea.
Boom.
Yeah.
All right, that that one I would have never got. All right, what's this?
Right gonadovain.
Oh, so what's the other one? Left? You said left and then right?
Yeah, this is left, this is right.
Uh, how do you, how do you know? Is it because of the, it it's next to a particular structure or you just like?
I I know that the left gonadovain, it drains into the left renal vein. And then if I remember correctly, the right gonadovain drains into the inferior vena cava.
Ah.
Where this superior mesenteric vein, I think.
What is the left one draining to again, sorry?
The renal vein, the left renal vein.
Left renal vein. Is that right renal vein?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it drains into the inferior vena cava directly. That's what's going here. And then this left renal vein drains into the, sorry, the left gonadovain. Drains direct into the left renal vein.
Okay, that makes sense. Oh, and it's the left renal vein what splits into the middle supra rino. Uh, and inferior renal supra.
Yeah, I think so.
Is that the one?
The, that is arteries.
Oh, shit.
Okay, let's keep going.
It's the. Off, no, is that the part of the duodenum?
Yeah.
It's the third or. Off part. I think it's the third part. So what's the name of it? Transvers duodenum?
Third part.
Oh, I'll just.
Transverse is um, large intestine.
Oh.
Yeah, transverse colon.
Okay, so it's just inferior part of the duodenum, okay.
That's the last one there. You guys only do one more, then switch to something else, or?
Yeah, then can we do anterior neck and thorax, bro?
Oh, are you mad?
Bro, I don't even think we've done that, bro.
Let's do it, bro. Let's do it. Let's do it.
Car just wants to flex. All right, manubrium. What's the notch called, man?
Jugular notch, I think.
Jugular notch, yeah. There's another name for it. Like, it's like sup- what's it? Sup- Supra.
Super sternos, supra sternos notch.
Yeah, supra sternos. I'm just gonna say jugular notch. That's the one I remember. That's the coracoid process and it's.
Choraco brachialis.
Watch muscle distal attachment.
Pectoralis minor.
That's a technicality, bro. Pectoralis minor? Can it also be the choraco brachialis? I swear. Distal attachment, okay.
Oh, distal attachment is the pectoralis one, okay. So the proximal is what you said? What was it?
The choraco brachialis.
Slide what? Oh, slide what process? Yes, let's go. I I think I know this. I'll let you guys guess.
Damn. It's like that, huh?
You guys guess first and I'll I'll tell you my answer.
Long thoracic.
Uh, I guess that sounds right because he said lung already.
Yeah, I'm guessing lung.
Oh, there you go.
Let's go.
I pulled it out of the depths of my subconscious.
That's crazy how you got that.
Oh, this one's easy.
I I I have an answer already. Oh, you guys guess first.
A accessory.
Which nerve? I don't know.
Cranial nerve. Is it ten or eleven?
Eleven, it's accessory.
Accession, okay, eleven.
Oh, yeah, we did do this.
Cranial F eleven. Bruh.
A superior belly of the omohyal.
What is that?
I'm cracked, I'm telling you. No, we haven't done the neck catcher. No, we haven't done the neck surgery.
Ha, what the hell is going on? Bruh.
Bro, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, that's. Blue Link Anatomy Ar- Architect, bro, I'm telling you, change your life.
Maybe I should just. Just focus on Anki, bro, holy shit. Shahab, you are destroying. I did this yesterday and I I can't remember, bro.
Bro, this is, this is basically an ad for Anki now.
Yeah. In fact, watch our newest Anki tutorial video. Links will be in the description, links will be in the description right here. If I forget about the description, I'll I'll link it in the video right now, it's free advertisements.
Open it up.
If you guys wanna be. As cracked as me, just watch this tutorial video right here.
Bro, that's crazy.
It's in the link, it's, it's right there, it's right there.
No, you blocked car.
Ah, you're right, you're right. Okay, done to buy this nerve, oh, alright, I know this, I know this, it's the.
The Vegas.
Yeah, Vegas nerve, that's a cranial nerve, eleven, uh, ten. Cranial nerve ten.
Why do you guys know the neck, man? What are you talking about?
Jeria, bro. You didn't review, this isn't week seven, bro, you didn't review this?
Bro, what are you talking about?
Bro, it's an entire section on week seven is the anterior neck portion, bro.
Is that actually week seven, bro?
No, yeah, oh, no, no, it's not, side fucking jury.
Um, oh, this one's the.
The anterocerecalus.
Yeah, oh, bro.
No, bro, I'm not playing this game anymore.
Nah, nah, it's good, it's good, it's good, it's 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 like the. The anterocerecalus is like a U shape. Can you, can you draw it up?
Draw it out, I just gonna trace it out, this is anterocerecalus, this is U shape.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, that's good.
I- it's guaranteed on this exam for sure.
Mm-hmm, how you, how you?
A hundred percent how you. I think this is. Lateral pectoral.
Is it? Nah, is it?
I'm thinking it's lateral pectoral because the medial pectoral branch goes to the. It might be medial pectoral, actually, I'm thinking.
No, 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 it's not medial, it's not medial, it's lateral. That the medial is that one there in the middle, yeah, lateral pectoral, yeah.
Bro, how cracked are we, bro? How cracked? These, I know the pack major gets innovation from the lateral pectoral nerve and the medial pectoral nerve and then.
So what are the ones below it? Do you know the ones below?
The one underneath the lateral.
I think medial. I don't know, I have no clue.
Oh.
This one's easy.
Co- common corroded. Common corroded artery?
Alright, nice.
Let's go, uh, yeah, this one.
So you said this was medial?
Nah, 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 medial. Median, is it median or medial?
Medio, medial pectoral artery, thoraco-chromial artery.
Pectoral branch, okay.
Okay.
What the fuck is that, bro?
What are we looking at?
Oh, bro, that's the varic, it's the inferior. Varic, um.
Artery.
Inferior.
How the fuck did you get that?
Bro, it's easy, it's easy, if you look at the, try see, like, trace the varic gland, right? Trace it.
Yeah, it goes around it.
Right, it's it's just on the bottom part, so inferior. Varic, and then there's one on top as well.
And that's your superior?
Yeah, superior varic artery. Yeah.
Easy.
Wait, wait, don't tell me, don't tell me, it's the, what's it start with?
If I tell you when it starts, you'll get it right away.
Okay. It's above the S C M, it's the external jugular vein. External jugular vein? Yeah. I still, I still remember something.
This one's easy. Yeah, yeah, cephalic vein, this is easy. Ismus, yeah.
Ishmush, something like that.
Yeah, we're done with this.
Bro, you are crazy, I studied this literally yesterday and you still. I like forgot some of the stuff, kind of shocked that you know, like, most of it.
I'm telling you, I'm cracked, I'm cracked.
Actually, bro, that's crazy. Yo, Jerry, we need to get on that Blue Link Anki ASAP.
Hmm.
Which one do you guys wanna do now?
You pick, Jerry, you pick.
Oh, no, we're doing something else, right?
Yeah, we'll do something else.
Bro, I was having fun, that was fun.
That was torture.
What about like lower limbs, bro? I think.
Okay, let's do lower limb.
Yeah.
I might actually get washed on this, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, low limbs talk.
You'd be fine, bro. Yeah.
Easy.
Shit.
Posture cruciate ligament.
P C L, yeah.
Anterior cruciate ligament?
No, that's patella tendon, wait, no.
Fibular collateral ligament.
You sure?
Yeah.
Collateral?
I am sure, boss, I am sure, that's why I got it right. Is this the tibia, this is the fibula?
Yeah.
Right, that's the patella.
Yeah, I thought they'd like remove, cut the ten patella out. Thought that was the front, man, hooked, okay, all good.
Lateral meniscus.
Yeah, lateral, I'm going with that too. Was it? Yeah.
Yeah. Papillotum vein.
You're gonna get cooked, right? What took you like less than half a second? Literally.
The recall's automatic, bro. The tibial collateral ligament.
So medial.
Yeah, this is medial meniscus, tibial collateral.
Also medial collateral, yeah.
I saw, didn't we just do this?
P C L again.
Is it P C L again? Okay. Oh, it is.
A C L.
Wait, let me get this.
Nah.
Is this lateral?
Oh, meniscus.
Lateral meniscus?
Oh, it is, damn, yeah, yeah.
Cuz y- yeah, okay.
What is, oh, is that just?
The kneecap? No.
Patella sheet or something?
Patella tendon.
Oh, patella, big amount, okay. And it's covering the kneecap, right?
That is your.
Tibial. Tibial sign too. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh.
Extensor digitum longus.
Extensor digitum longus.
Yeah.
What did I say, what did I say?
The toe.
That's your Achilles, what do you call it?
Calcinial tendon.
Calcanial, yeah. Is that the same one again?
No, I think it's a fibularis. I think it's the. I don't think it's sciatic, I think it's the. Common fibular nerve.
Common.
Superficial, I did say superficial fibular here, but.
Oh, you were, you were, yeah, you're pretty much there. Superficial fibular nerve, also known as the fibularis longus, oh, no, no, it's the longest, okay, yeah. That's the muscle tagged, alright.
That's the common fibular nerve, so it makes sense, it's superficial fibular nerve.
Fibularis, okay.
Papillotum artery.
We just, didn't we already have this?
We had the vein before, we had this structure right here.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, is this? Posterior sciatic, yeah.
Posture tibial. Tibial nerve, yeah, tibial nerve.
Wait, sciatic is in the thigh, bro.
Yeah, it's up. That's the last one, I think.
Nice, not bad.
Also, the sciatic become tibial?
The sciatic comes the tibial and the common fibular.
I see, so.
Yeah.
Okay. That was fun, bro, even though I got all that, all of those wrong, but that was fun, I had fun.
Bro, Dory, I got cooked too.
You did not get cooked, bro, what are you talking about? You cooked us, bro. Dre, we were the ingredients, we got cooked alive.
Bro, what do you guys wanna do now?
Oh, bro, do you wanna do? Uh, actually, yeah.
You guys said you wanna do some short answer, right?
Yeah.
Bro, I'm gonna sleep.
Brody, bro, bro, I'm having so much fun, bro.
Yeah, we can have fun every day. Hmm, can't take all the fun events.
Bro, we we should be cooking right now, bro, what do you mean? We should, let's just do some short answer questions and call it a day.
Yeah, yeah, bro, almost done, almost done, bro. And then we'll do this. Tomorrow.
Hmm.
Nah, actually, if you guys sit down, that'd be sweet.
Tomorrow, yeah, yeah, can do.
Yeah. Or do you guys wanna meet up tomorrow?
Do we have class?
No.
Apparently we have to go.
No, no class in person. That's the fourteenth, that's the racism lecture.
Why are you smiling?
Have a license in lecture?
I I'm just smiling cuz I'm happy there's a racism lecture, I'm very anti-racism.
Oh. Bro, I wanna be.
Why are you smiling, bro?
Bro, I'm not smiling.
What do you mean? I saw a cheeky little smirk on your face when they said the racism lecture.
I don't know, man, I don't know what you're talking about.
I know car's excited.
Huh? Yeah. I'm, 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 I'm against racism, bro.
We all stand, we all stand against racism. We also stand against antisemitism. The act- the actual definition of it. We're also, we're allies, we're allies, we're allies, we're allies. True, I never specified allied of what, allies of what? We're just allies.
Yeah. Bro, I don't know, man, you're the ops right now.
Sorry?
Right now, you're the ops.
How am I the ops, bro? How am I getting cancelled? I said. I said we stand against racism, we stand against antisemitism, we're allies. How am I, how's that gonna get cancelled? Let's anti-cancel, bro.
Yeah, 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 we're safe.
Maybe Jeria, I don't know about you, cuz you're not taking it the right way, bro.
Nah, 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 I'm just talking about what could. Anyway, let's. Let's talk about the inferior vena cava.
Dude, we'll talk about the inferior vena cava. Or we can talk about. Gynecologists need to do abortions right now, anyways. Guys wanna do short answer?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do like five, give me, how many short answers you guys wanna do?
Yeah, do five and from weeks one to twelve. So it's, so it's not the neck, something we've actually done.
Uh, let's just do all of them, might as well, cuz then I, we get early exposure to it, so.
Alright.
When we go through it again.
Hopefully it understands what you meant by that. Uh, okay. Frank Starling is contractility, so.
The more blood that fills the heart, the more it contracts to release blood. So that helps to main cardiac output through.
So the more it can, uh, sorry, the more it expands, the more it contracts, and so therefore the more it. Um, ejects.
Yeah, and then it impacts cardiac output because there's like a greater preload. Which pushes blood out. It impacts stroke volume.
Uh, yeah. So it increases.
Greater the. Blood entering. Which impacts. Stroke volume. Load. Two. What the hell am I looking at, bro? I don't know what that is.
No second question? I'm lost. What is C D four?
C D four plus is a type of T cell that is used for antigen presentation to antibody, uh, B cells, I believe. C D four, I I I think it's T, there's a T helper cell and a. Cytotoxic T cell, and C D four is for T helper, I think.
So.
Yeah, it's a helper T cell.
Okay. So sequential cellular events. So what happens first?
So I I think it's the dendritic cell. Cell. Presents the antigen to a naive. T. Cell which will. Go to the limb. Node. Will become. C D four plus.
Wait, so you're saying the dendritic cell picks up the.
Yeah.
So the dendritic cell picks up the antigen. And 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 kind of holds it like a ring and presents it to the T cell. Like it's proposing to the T cell, T cell sees that shit, and then. It becomes a C D four plus T cell. Is that right?
I'm thinking that's what it is.
Alright. Okay.
Alright, so first pass, is that? Is that related to first order? In pharmacodynamics or no?
Yeah, I'm thinking first pass metabolism is metabolism through the stomach.
Okay. I need to do farm. Two clinical strategies. To minimize.
Use P H. Increase uh. Allow the oral drug. To survive. Stomach acids and. What else?
Um.
Wait, what is it? Clinical strategies, so what did you say? Allow the oral drug to survive the stomach acid? Or is that still part of the definition?
I, I, I think so, I'm just trying to simplify, cause I don't know what the hell the answers are here.
Okay.
Would a capsule be one?
Sorry?
What's a clinical strategy, man? Is it like?
To bypass first pass? Or the, do we have to eat? Can we inject it into the blood? Is that not?
For oral drug bioavailability.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what it's asking, to be honest.
Let's just bush it something.
Maybe eating, eating, uh, I don't know, eating. Like having the drug be in a capsule, so then it bypassed the acid, and then it gets dissolved in the. Test time, I don't know, man.
Yeah, I don't know, okay, we can just skip that.
Yeah.
Or. Releases.
Okay, pathophysical mechanisms. Uh, main one is pyloric sphincter. What do you call it?
Do they have any kind of like, um, suction cup that allows them to adhere to the, to the, um, stomach? Walls, cells? Or is that the Giardia?
That's Giardia.
Yeah, the, the urease is the main one. What else? Neutralized.
But it's the, uh, yeah, uh, allowing it to enter the duodenum. It's how does neutralized acid enter the duodenum?
So, the, uh, H pylori releases urease, which helps the nerves, allowing H pylori to enter.
Uh, allowing H pylori to enter, and then what? And then from there. Okay.
It, oh, yeah, yeah, do you know ulcer formation, okay.
So doesn't it do something to the pyloric, um, sphincter?
I have no clue, I'll be honest with you.
It might actually, but. That's like very in detail.
Is it?
Yeah.
Then what, like, well, something has to cause the ulcer. Duodenal P H level is like around eight, right? Or like seven point? Or was it like five?
I think it might have been five, not too sure.
The stomach is around two or something, right? Two to three?
Yeah.
Alright, whatever, that's, let's just go with that, so question five, population health. For ethical considerations, I must be addressed when designing a population-based screening program. Ethical. So we just hit the.
I think it's. The cost, uh, yeah. This is literally a question from the practice exam we did on Friday.
Whoa, why am I blanking on now?
I remember one was cost.
Is accuracy one?
You put down accuracy.
It's the ethical part that's throwing me off.
Just ignore the ethical part? And let, let's try to figure out what's going on.
No, cause it's cervical screening, cervical has to be, alright, so ethical, ethics-wise, let's say, um. Yeah, consent is good. Confidentiality, see now we're going, we're getting somewhere, alright, nice, so. Um. Got to be something race-related as well. Cultural sensitivity. Respect, I think respect makes sense. Shahab, I heard you respect women.
I do, I genuinely do, while lying on the Quran, I respect women. Just some, some individuals in our cohort don't believe that due to preconceived notions they have.
Hmm, okay, well. And that has been dispersed now. Alright, so we got. Five answers there. Alright, let's see.
Two point five out of four? One point five out of four, one out of four. Oh, barely passed, barely passed, really fast, really fast.
Pass, guys.
We had our blood entering the heart, so stretch of the myocardial sarcomeres increases, what the, bro, no fucking way they're gonna be going into this much detail.
The sarcomeres?
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
We, we said all of that.
Yeah, the further it stretches, the greater the.
Fine, Frank Sterling, we got four, like, we said all of those things, we just didn't write it all. That's calm. Alright, then we.
Lastic band.
Question two.
We just haven't even done this yet.
Yeah. Alright, question three, first pass, have we, yeah, I think we have done this, I think it was like week four or five, I haven't done it.
Yeah. This one, I, I've never done this one.
Pre systemic.
Card, you remember this? I feel like it was, we, cause we did pharmacokinetics, would have been like the second lecture with, um. With that guy.
Which guy?
Yeah, that guy.
Jonathan?
I mean, yeah. Jonathan.
Really? I don't remember, bro.
I don't know, I'm assuming.
Nah, I didn't do this, man.
Okay. And four, we should have got, man, we should have got at least three out of four for that one, for H pylori. It was a whole week, we had a whole week of H pylori, man. Metaplasia, cytotoxins. Oh, yeah, gastrin, we should have mentioned gastrin. Okay, so it's the bicarbonate that gets outstripped.
Oh, eyes.
They didn't mention the pylorum.
So we got the first part, right? We got the urease part, right?
Yeah.
I don't think we need to go into that much detail, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, man, anything. Sir?
What does gastrin do again?
I think it isn't.
It tells the body to produce, uh, uh, to, those are parados, no. It's a, whatever it's that.
Stimulates the release of.
Signal, signaling.
So it stimulates. Acid secretion.
Yeah.
Okay. Gastritis is inflammation of the gastric cells. I would. That causes. Increased gastrin release. Why would inflammation increase gastrin release?
Hmm, good question. Why does gastritis increase gastrin? So damaging the stomach lining causes it to be, to make less acid. Uh, if the, if it's in, if it's. Oh, bro, I need to sleep. If it's not.
Oh, wait, okay. So, um. And acid, and then that causes also, cause it's like extremely. It causes inflammation. Okay, that makes sense. And then question five, and we got four out of four, wow, alright, so it's, uh, cost, travel time.
Yeah, we, we got a beer pa- barely a pass, barely a pass.
All because of the P P H.
Yeah.
Population health is gonna save us, man.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. Hey, should we end the stream here? Cause we've been going on it for two hours.
Yeah.
I wanted to wash them and then I'm gonna do some monkey.
Alright.
Sounds good.
Take care, bye bye.
Yes, sir, ticker, guys, bye bye, thank you so much for tuning in, we really appreciate it.
Do, repeat this tomorrow, bro.
Done, we'll do it tomorrow.
Alright, sounds good, alright, I'll see you guys tomorrow.